Well, thank you. We started that first selectmen's meeting ever and I call the regular meeting on Columbia Board of Selectmen's order Tuesday, June 1st, in year 2021 at 7:00 PM. We can start by calling all those that are following at home, these rocks. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the color which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Remember when I turned sideways, I got the camera sucking my stomach. All right. So we're here, but we have people out there still. So rules of conduct for the hybrid virtual meeting. This meeting, we have both in-person and virtual. The session is being both video and audio recorded. Board members and staff who are virtual will, they're all here. Well, I don't know. You may be at home, so that's fine. Board members and staff who are joining virtually will generally remain on mute, except when speaking or voting, and will generally be keeping video of themselves on throughout the meeting. If a member of the public joining virtually creates an audio or video disturbance, they may be manually rejected from the meeting upon recommendation on the staff for the first selectmen. For public input before the meeting, input should have been in 24 hours ago at publicinput@columbiaCT.org. If you're attending virtually, the public comments during the meeting can be submitted through the chat feature in, or wave your hand and a question might be on mute. For both your, in both methods, your name and address. Okay. Approval of the agenda. I make a motion to approve the agendas delivered. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
I think Carrie's words. Approval of the minutes, town minutes meeting for May 4. I make a motion if we approve the minutes from the special town meeting on Tuesday, May 4, 2021, at 6:45 PM. This was for the special, oh yeah, funding for the volunteer fire department rescue. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
301. And Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes for May 18th. I make a motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Selectmen's meeting on May 18th, 2021. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Can't understand. You're good, thank you. Audience of citizens.
From events, one beach room. I just wanted to ask the selectmen or talk about a little bit about the public late for a minute. I happen to be walking my dog this evening and the gentleman checking boats. He's very good. Dave, I think is his name. He was doing a great job. Boat rules him. He looks at all the stuff and can't register them because the registration says it has a motor of 90 horsepower. And which is correct. But he also looking at boat, apparently there was a sticker from last year that someone had made the exception for him to put boat in at 90 horsepower. And that concerns me because if you do him at 90 horsepower, you have to do the next kind of country and et cetera, et cetera. So there's really won't happen. But I just wanted to just remind us that we shouldn't be doing that, is my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Oh.
Next, what is the maximum horsepower system?
90 outboard, 150.
No, it's not, not 80.
I'm sorry, 80. 80 outboard and 150. So somewhere along their line, either one of the people gave him a sticker or somebody made the exception for it.
We're going to check those because I think inboard is 135, isn't it? We'll check. We have a comment, so we'll look into that also.
Now, what is the result? Did that person get injured or?
No. He turned him away. The fellow with the boat was not obnoxious or anything, but it was like he would give his exception of guilt. So I don't know where he got his exception or where he got his sticker. Who would make those decisions at this point?
It's the gate monitors that are all under the Rep. Director Mark Bolson. No.
So Mark would make those exceptions?
No, 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 no exceptions would be.
That's what that was your question. Who would make the exceptions? There are no exceptions.
Good, thank you.
Nobody makes the exception, so. So now we have to find out what happened because if I was that gentleman, I'd probably be a little questioning. So, okay, thank you. Anybody else? Old business charter revision commission discussion. With Rick Nasson?
Well, Rick, now we have Rick Roberts on, just in case there's any questions, because this is the Board of Selectmen's last shot at anything they want to move to the public hearing, but then still the board could, based on what they hear at the public hearing, could modify and then send it. If you make any changes, it would have to go back to charter revision to get there, it's classed, it's back to you. And then you would set a scripted call for the November election vote at the town. November elections is where this will be voted on. And I know one, one change that did come to me by Beverly was that anywhere where it says fiscal manager, it should be finance director. So we've since changed the name from fiscal manager to now finance director, so we could just do a search and replace. That's the one change written before the public here.
That would be reflected in what you have.
Do you have that on receive?
It's not reflected in what you have because Beverly just noticed it.
I see Richard. I think I heard about this before. In fact, we mentioned it last meeting.
Well, we haven't had a charter revision committee.
So.
Okay, so you would have made the change.
Yeah.
Right, it hasn't been changed, but we'll make that change to the public here.
Okay.
So that's one change. And the only other change that you've left, if you haven't made a decision on is do you want to address what we call first selectmen? Do you want to leave it the way it is? Do you want to just allow the first selectmen to decide what they want to be called and that not address it in the charter? Or do you want to make it first selectmen slash first selectwoman, wherever it's found in the charter?
So I did take the time to look up in the dictionary. It is a gender neutral term, met. And it's only been in the last 20, 30 years where people are freaking out. It, you know, it's just so.
You know, I'm going to, I'm going to ask Carmen Vance, who was first selectman, first, and many times I addressed first selectwoman. So Carmen, you have thoughts on this?
Well, I tried to change it in the very beginning by just using it and that sort of thing. It kind of never went anywhere. The idea that you put first selectmen slash selectwoman, then it can be used either way. People can make the choice.
Well, there was discussion to make it select person.
Yes, and I won't, I asked Mark about that. What was?
I've, I've never heard the position anywhere in state called anything but selectmen or selectwoman.
Okay, but it hasn't been since recent, two years now probably, that people have become more respectful or aware of gender neutrality and, you know, how people feel. So, you know, I
There was, I looked it up, select person, if you do Google, there's a few towns in the country that have changed.
All in the country.
In the country. One's in Maine, one's in New Hampshire, one somewhere else.
I have no problem with it, selectman and selectwoman slash.
Well, you just pick it.
You just pick where you want to be. I know there's the other issue, some people don't identify as on news and some people don't identify as either gender, so I don't know what to do with that.
I think we leave it up to the person who is the organist, what they want to be called. That's me. I leave it selectmen, leave it up to the person who is the organist. Please address me as that, actually we're not. But that's me.
There are issues that they have to go through all the ordinances, you know, there's all sorts of things that.
Well, we're going to be on this one here for hours if we don't.
Have you ever considered changing it to mayor?
I know, that's the easiest. It's not, a mayor can be.
And bullets the rest of the, I'm still select.
You'd be a county.
You got a change to it.
You'd definitely be a county.
Oh, it's a lot different. That a selectman and a fourth selectman. Mayor of the city or council is different. That's a major change required. Rich Roberts is on, if we had one ask, you know.
Concerning here.
I'm fine with it, ladies. I don't mind. So be it. Any of the other changes that you guys discussed from last two weeks ago, I believe, everybody's good?
I think the other biggest one that we're doing, they're doing, you know, the off-year offices for getting rid of that over the next, what, six years?
Take two cycles.
Five years, so that'll be great. I think that'll be nice.
How's that going to work out?
They have, they had, um, Rich Roberts said this, so that nobody gets their office taken away.
And what happens is you'll always take office during the year of the election, not wait a whole year to take office, as we do now, with the office.
There's, right. Planning and zoning has one and assessment, one of the others.
I never understood that.
Yeah, so it'll be, that'll be nice.
So we can, we can ask them to finalize the gap on the hearing.
What we'll do is go to public hearing, listen to whatever it says, and if there's anything that you then have to read on based on what you hear, and then we'll decide if it has to go back to charter revision based on what you might come up.
Okay, so you motion to send it to public hearing or just?
You've already done that. You've already set a public hearing. You haven't made any substantial changes, so.
All right.
Except for the finance director, but that's minor. We'll just have it public here.
Okay, great. Next is new business approval for the job description for Indian Wetlands and Watercourses agent. What's different here?
It's basically a whole new, it's all different. We had a job description that was by 25 years old. So John and I stole Seymour's.
I was wondering if that's.
And then John added a few other things that he thought were essential. And we just made it look like all other job descriptions, put the physical, mental requirements in there.
In the section of their experience and training, I mean, it's really good. I don't think you'd find personal needs required.
It'd be tough. So some of them I wrote more equivalent or experience, because you're right, some of these.
You'd find a person be more approachable, but I don't know if that's hard.
This person has a lot of power.
You're, well, you're zoning enforcement and you're an wetlands agent, do that.
So you'd be surprised. Yeah, they're more powerful.
Yeah, they can, they can shut down.
They can shut down anything, yeah.
And the fire wash is probably is the most powerful town.
The biggest one, most intriguing experience I had was in Manchester. And I was there and our attorney was there, the town attorney was there, and zoning official was there. And the zoning official, basically, the two attorneys argued about the thing, basically, it still came down to the zoning agents. And the only, basically, the town attorney had to convince the zoning agent that the two attorneys were correct, that he could have overruled them both. And then we were got, would have had a lawsuit. Cool, we're here to prepare all the things that worked out. But it was amazing to realize how much our zoning agent has. Actually, Wetlands is a similar situation.
Okay, I'm fine with this, because of the last line, it's used as a guide for personal action and such to be changed by employer as it needs to be, employer will require them to be job changed. So. I move to approve new job description for Indian Wetlands and Watercourses agent. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Columbia Lake. You guys asked for rain. I'm sorry we done it on the weekend, but you guys, how's it looking?
It's up. It's, I think they said it's still about, what, do you say 12 inches?
It's 15 inches down. It, it was 21 inches down, so the water came up six inches over the weekend.
And we should get an inch or two more.
Yeah, I, I looked at air doming. That, that stream is really booming.
Oh, it's still draining.
It was booming.
Oh, I know. Well, the water, the land is saturated now, so it's got covered up. Yesterday, I was at a gathering in the first and second week. Can you walk up that stream and make sure no papers and blue cans up there?
Yeah.
Well, there is a paper game up. Residents were asking if it could be torn down. You, you.
Better than Wetlands.
You, you would need dynamite to do that. Be better.
Yeah, and then.
They just build it, yeah.
But next day.
No, about an hour later.
Okay. Appointments and resignations. Appointment of Tom Courier to the Wyndham Regional Transit District Board. I move to appoint Tom Courier to Wyndham Regional Transit District Board for a term of 2018 to 2022. Tom has been on that board. This is just a reappointment for.
Yeah, this is his second four-year appointment, and we just forgot to do it, so. It wasn't official.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right.
Aye, aye.
Wonderful, thank you. Appointment of Elizabeth Lund to replace George Murphy as representative to Mid-Nirac. I appoint, I move to appoint Elizabeth Lund as representative to Mid-Nirac. Would you like to tell us?
Mid-Nirac is our recycling regional collaborative with 15 towns to get rid of hazardous waste.
You sure you don't want that job, Lund?
I don't want that. Those meetings are always two hours long, and all they talk about is trash.
They're tough. Just, just.
So Beth is excited to take that.
I'm sure she is. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Quick. Town administrator report.
All right. What I have is a letter, the latest update for COVID-19. I wanted the board's thought time. But I followed all the CDC guidelines for COVID. Want to take a minute to read it and give me your, your okay, or if you have any changes you want to make?
When we, the outdoor events, large outdoor events, you can maintain distance. I don't, you are getting it outside. The, the data is out, the science is out. You're not getting outside. About when we can't maintain social distance.
And you're right, outdoor mask wearing is going away.
Yes. You're not getting it outside, especially in the summertime. You just know.
It says we will mask, not require.
Is this true?
So I think anybody, you'll see more people wearing masks just because they want to wear a mask, not because of, you know, it'll take a while for everybody to lose the mask. Well, okay with this letter.
And probably the, the big challenge is if an employee is not vaccinated, we're asking them to wear a mask if they leave their desk here. That's the only top line. Because we're not asking the public when they come in if they're vaccinated or not. And some employees are, are not vaccinated due to many reasons. So it tough part of this ordinance is that if you're vaccinated, you're saying you're fine. If you're not vaccinated, scared as you could if you got COVID, you can't leave a resident.
Or a resident can't leave the person too.
Right. But all employees are behind plastic glass. If an employee is nervous, they can wear a mask. But right now, that, that's the only tough part about this guideline.
Is this, this is inter-office memorandum or is it an ordinance?
It's an inter-office memorandum that I sent to employees. And it will also help distract signings for coming into the building. That if you're.
Just ask people who are vaccinated to kind of wear a mask.
That's what I'm saying. I'm going to recommend that everybody that's unvaccinated wear a mask and recommend to anybody in the public that's unvaccinated that they wear a mask. I, I don't want to be the COVID Nazi. Listen to everybody.
Keep windows open, that's all I can say. Keep it ventilated.
So you go this way, this.
I'm fine with it. Anybody? Any opposition?
Okay, and then the next thing is that the, our liaison with Eversource, Toni Vlandy, has notified that there's some, like they do every year, structure work comes in power lines. And she's given in phase one, phase two dates, when all, with the snow will start and where it'll happen. Get that memo if anybody asks you why those helicopters are flying over, or why all the trucks are accessing the power lines. That's what it is. Hold on. We already gave you the lake update. This weekend, we'll have full lifeguards and full gate monitors for marine patrol starting starts. We've been doing it only on the weekends, nothing during the week. I think we have eight monitors.
Look at school ones, sure.
We had a lot of snow.
Did it ever start?
They had a lot of snow days, aren't you? I don't think there should ever be another snow day. We have all the infrastructure for at-home learning.
I don't know.
That's all I have.
Okay, some correspondence there. There's two kinds of, resignation, some is independent. So if you did, if you'd like to, budgets and transfers. Oh, on the lake, I'm going to give Columbia, a little Columbia lake update. I get, I get a lot of concern from citizens about going on the lake, okay? First of all, the beach looks, it was a lot of trash on there. We know about the goose droppings all over the docks and everything. Now that the beach is open, that will be taken care of. You know, I went down there and I checked it, and last week, the port was open. It was a beautiful day on, on Thursday or Friday, kids were out. I don't know who supervises when the beach is not open, but there were kids down there that were picking up the duck droppings and throwing it at each other, you know. So, mom's, dad's, whatever. But we know about it. We're going to take care of that. In addition to that, violations on the lake, I get a call every third day about a water skier who's using a mannequin to be able to get around the lake without
A spotter.
having a spotter, and it's happened time and time again. We will address it. Rules are rules. And I think that the lake monitoring people, lake patrol, they do a very good job. We had a, an incident already, and after investigating, they monitored the a very good job, a very good job. And so I commend them for that. It's the start of the summer, and hopefully it's a long, hot, beautiful summer that everybody enjoys the lake. They're out there for a reason, and there's rules on the lake for reasons, safety reasons, really, and eco reasons, so. You've been addressed. All right, thank you. Budget and transfers, budget, what do we have?
There's big transfers.
Yep. Make a motion, we approve the transfer $186 from printing to postage to cover the cost of, for the printer to mail the annual budget deal. Any discussion? All those in favor? Make a motion, we transfer $150 for the Becker Senior Center from electricity to the telephone communications line to cover the cost, both budget for the telephone and the internet at the senior center. Any discussion? All those in favor? And I make a motion that we transfer $175 from printing to general supplies, the marine patrol and gate monitoring supplies and cover additional amount to get to the end of this one year, which is in. Any discussion? All those in favor? I make a motion, we pay refunds in the amount of $539.53 to Sternado and RW credit leasing. Any discussion? All those in favor? Bills, make a motion, we pay bills in the amount of $60,051.21 consisting of 2021 emergency, 2021 regular and credit card and paycheck. Any discussion?
I saw the regale. Is that the first payment? What, $9,000 or something?
We've been paying as we go. As, as a chief.
And how are we doing?
We're, we're sold, it's a $90,000 contract.
We buying the new range? Yes. And are we petting cash? Is this for putting money into a, to refill the party, petting cash? We know when that petting cash is spent?
Yes, it was. I have a description on it, Jeff.
Any discussion?
Well, if it wasn't inflatable, it would have been an expensive bike chair.
And $89?
Yeah, they'd go up, they're costly. The good ones only play when you go underwater, the bad ones play when they get wet. So you could be in a rain. You want it, there, that pressure after you. Which means it could be more than that.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor for paying the bills?
Aye, aye.
Also, everybody, like, we did make it to correspondence, but the loose letter is at the table when you went out. Oh, also, everybody, like, we did make it to course letters, but the newsletter is at your table when you, when we're out. June.
Okay, are you interested?
Yes, I do. Sorry about that. Because my property affects the high tension power line. I get notification when they're going to, to work. And I got asked one a few weeks ago and it said they were gonna do vegetation control and they would be using herbicides. So, uh, I have, I have a comment and a question. Is the town notified that? Because directly again, it puts the high tension power line and it goes right through the farm and it goes through Joshua's trust. Does the town get notified that?
Uh, because of, because of the nature of the question, we're.
So, Ian, why don't you and I talk tomorrow? Because I need to know exactly. Are you asking for the day that a truck might meander down there?
No, what she's asking is.
I'm asking if the town ever gets notified.
Well, do we get notified when the work's gonna start and what areas they're gonna be working in and what date range it's gonna be?
Right, here's the question. Did we get a notification that they're gonna use herbicides to keep, we, uh, vegetation control? Did we get a notification?
I don't believe so. We just get notified when they're approaching, when they're going to be doing work.
We'll look into that.
So I, because I received this and I'm the steward of the Joshua's trust, not to mention the chairman of the conservation commission, they had a phone number. So I called it, that the gentleman, this Chris did, and it's phone number and informed him that Joshua's trust is a conservation land trust and that the town recreation area with lots of children and zentifar with a community garden all about the power line. And I asked him if he would please not use herbicides in those areas because they have the, um, capability of doing it manually, you know, the cutting it rather than poisoning. And he assured me that he would do that. So, uh, you know, if it takes me finding the little thing on my doorknob to make that happen, that's a pretty leaky vessel. And I think that, um, if the town asks to be notified or whatever, or set up a policy with um, EverSource, well, I think that would be a little more official.
Thank you. Do you know the gentleman, person you talked to?
Uh, not off the top of my head, but I still have the little.
Yeah.
Doorknob thing, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Is that it?
That's it, thank you. I will.
No, nothing in chat.
Did Jen raise her hand?
No, I think she was just scratching.
No, sorry.
Uh, board member comments?
We're requesting. Can you fill me in as to where we stand and what we're doing for fourth of July?
Uh, fourth of July is actually on the fifth of July. We're celebrating on Monday. And it's a normal parade. Nothing different.
It's the parade will be out of the booth.
But. I just read that.
Any thoughts or concerns?
No, I just wanted to take clarification.
And Tyler, Rob?
I do have one because, and I meant to bring it up. We use pesticides at the park. Just, you know, herbicides at the park. They do, they use true to, to keep poison ivy down and stuff, which is almost cancerous by being. So we use it, we use it ourselves. So I would like to have a list of what it is.
We have that available. We have the nations everywhere we.
Nation, they should be on the, on the website, in my, or me. I don't, I have, you know, I have health, health issues and I'm not the only person in town that does. They're very concerned.
I have no comments. So that is it. Um, I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-seven. All those in favor? Thank you. Thirty-seven, that's good.
Hmm.
That's good. Later, last few times. Uh, we have a sign, we transfer, I mean, we transfer.
Mark, you can stop the recording.
Okay, thank you.
Great, bye.
Bye, Jess.